Okay, so good evening, I'm Dave Hamilton, I'm the chairman of the City of Mill Creek Planning Commission, and we're calling our August 21st, 2025 meeting to order at 6:00 PM. And so then can we do a roll call, please, Justin?
Commissioner Hamilton.
Present.
Commissioner Schulte. Commissioner Brunda. Commissioner Brials.
Here.
Commissioner Hutton.
Here.
Commissioner Neff.
Present.
Commissioner O.
Okay, so we have seven members on the planning commission, we have four members present, so we have a quorum. Is there anybody online, Justin? Did somebody zoom in?
No one is online.
Nobody's zoomed in, okay, good, so. Okay, so this is not really our normal type of commission meeting tonight, we aren't reviewing a plan and making recommendations or code revisions and making recommendations to city council. We're here to have a discuss with the other members of volunteer boards here in the city to talk about the South Town Center sub area, which is basically everything south of Town and Country Grocery Store down to 164th. And it's been under, well, I won't take anybody's thunder, somebody want to explain where we've been on this?
Alright, so the question is, explain what we've done in the South Town Center?
Yes.
Yeah, so the South Town Center, you're correct, starts about Town and Country, goes a little bit beyond 164th, includes the QFC area as well. This is culmination of about five years of planning, I think altogether, that's when they started doing a master plan. That's when they started doing a Mill Creek Boulevard study, area study. And then we did a 2024 comprehensive plan. And then now we've embarked on this process to actually adopt a formal master plan. We've done some outreach, we've done a bunch of analysis now, and now the most critical thing is, is we're trying to generate reports, we'll get into that later, but we've, we've been working on and discussing the South Town Center for about five years now.
Okay, good, thank you, Jeff. So do we have a form and format we were going to work on?
So is that? So we could do the approval of minutes, and then the DRB has a quorum, so they need to also do a roll call, and the one started.
Okay, so is there approval to the, motion to approve the minutes from our June 26th meeting?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes, any discussion? If seeing them, those in favor, say goodbye by saying aye.
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 Okay, so that motion carries. Go ahead.
Oh, okay, so for DRB special meeting for August 21st, this is a quorum, and I don't have my sheet in front of me, this is so embarrassing. So I'm gonna hand off the mic to my DRB members. Russia N, DRB member.
Thank you.
Ken Lowry.
Dave Hamilton.
Yep, are we, do they already do the minutes and everything? Okay. Anyone pulled up the PowerPoint? Alright, so we, woo, that's loud. Alright, I'll just talk like this. Good evening, everyone, thank you for attending the special meeting, this is a very exciting opportunity. We're discussing the South Town Center, and we're doing what's called a master plan workshop. The purpose of this meeting is to primarily for to get input from all the different members of our volunteer boards to kind of discuss and flag key issues that we think the master plan should address. We'll get into it in a little, in a couple of slides, but I just wanted to make sure that I kind of first introduce this idea that the reason why we wanted to bring everyone on board for this is because this is such a major opportunity for the city. With that, we really need to make sure that arts and beautification, parks and rec, youth advisory, DRB, as well as planning commission have a say and have an influence and have some opportunity to really provide information that we can then provide to one, our consultants, but also relay it back to our esteemed council members who are, communicate to us that, you know, it's very critical that we get these groups on board because of the critical role they play in our community, next slide. Alright, so while we're here, in the 2024 comp plan, we were told by the state, we have to grow. We were given a number, and we were told, you have to change your zoning and the way your city operates to meet that number. And the way that the City of Mill Creek did that is we rezoned the South Town Center to accommodate that growth in order to protect our single-family neighborhoods. What this also means is that, or can you go back? And that is that ultimately, development is inevitable. The objective of this meeting here is not, how can we stop the growth, because the growth has to happen, but more, the growth is happening, so how can we make sure that when we do grow, it's growing in a way that reflects our values and what we think is most important, right? It's not a matter of if we grow, it's a matter of how we grow. And then the final thing is that, you know, this is, like I said, this is an opportunity for us to impart our values on the actual development of this South Town Center area, next slide. As I said before, we got state mandated growth here, this is from our comp plan here. The state said that we have to plan for about 4,000 additional Mill Creekians, Mill Creekians, is that the proper term? Milk, Milk Creakers. I like Creakers, that's a good one. For, we have to grow by 4,000 people, this, this is about 2,600 additional homes. Obviously, the only way to add additional 2,600 homes to meet those state standards is if we don't want to upzone our beautiful neighborhoods, well, there's a big area here that's maybe a little underutilized, maybe we can put that housing there. And that was the, that was the decision that was made. So this is all, again, the stress that the scenario of apartments and housing that you might have hear some resident, some hesitance towards embracing. That reality is already here, it's already zoned, it's already by right allowed in the South Town Center. So again, it's just a question of, do we want to grow with standards or without standards, next slide. South Town Center today, like I said, it's zone for Town Center. What this means is that it can go up to five stories, there is no density cap. There's also, it's about 50 acres of developable land, sometimes you'll see 80 acres. That stat is coming from a bunch of land in the, in the North Creek Basin that is undevelopable because it's a critical area, but of the actual concrete bits, it's about 50 acres of land that you can actually build on. There's about 55 businesses there, and it also features the lovely North Creek watershed and trail system. Next slide. So like I said, what we're talking about is growing with standards. This is our opportunity to, a master plan can set design guidelines, design criteria for when buildings go up. We can say, hey, there has to be a park here. Hey, there has to be infrastructure investments, there has to be stormwater investments. Hey developer, if you do this, you have to make this system work a little bit better. That's the point of a master plan, it's about shaping growth when it does happen, and shaping development when it does happen. The Town Center, that the beloved Town Center is actually just north of here, is a great example of a successful master plan. There was design criteria that were set when it was developed. Everything was told, it has to be look great, it has to be pedestrian oriented, and now we have a wonderful terrific jewel that attracts people from across the region. The downside is, next slide. Growth without standards. These are common sites across America, right? Developers were always act based on the zoning that's in place. And if you don't have strong growth criteria and strong design criteria, growth is gonna happen on the market terms, what that means, they're gonna do the exact cheapest development string they can. They're going to maximize their, whatever they think is gonna most efficiently get cars in and out of their parking lots and not really give considerations to aesthetics, or they're not really gonna care as much about creating a nice meandering sidewalk and all that stuff that we just love here. And so this is what happens, you have, you create poor pedestrian environments with limited character or charm. You know, these pictures here could, you could take, this could be literally anywhere in America, right? There is no place of sense, there's no sense of identity or no sense of place. It's just road and, look at the, you see like the sidewalks are just really, really close to the road. Not exactly a great place if you want to be a shop, or you want to walk your kids, or go on a nice evening stroll. It's not really a place you want to hang out. So this is an example of why it's good to have master plans and to be able to create growth with standards. I mean, yeah, next slide. So the South Town Master, the South Town Center Master Plan. What is a master plan and why do this? I know, planning commission, forgive me, I know this folks, for you, this might be pretty standard, but the plan of the the main project goals for the South Town Center Master Plan is to extend and enhance our Town Center and support long-term community and economic vitality, and then align our growth with infrastructure, mobility and sustainability. It's a lot of buzzwords in there, but what this basically means is we want to take what we love about South Town Center, and then just bring it on down to 164th. And then we want to be able to say, alright, well, if there's gonna be growth, we're gonna design this around someplace that's enjoyable to be, you know, we gotta be able to have the policies in place that's going to encourage more retail, more restaurants and stuff like that. And then more, and then also importantly is, we want to make sure that we're appropriately designing our infrastructure, our mobility and our sustainability. So what this means is, we want to make sure it's designed so that as this growth happens, the water is going to the places where it should go, that people are able to get to the places they need to be more efficiently. And then also, it's not creating a giant fume of poisonous gas that's gonna just make us miserable. So that's kind of the sustainability piece on this. So that's kind of the main project goals, is how can we make something beautiful? How can we make something that's providing a good return on investment to our citizens, but is also something that's checking a lot of our important boxes like mobility, sustainability, infrastructure, next slide. So here's some examples of what some master plan efforts look like in other communities. This is a rendering from the shoreline master plan, this was done by our consultant that's leading this effort called GGLO. They created this beautiful area in the shoreline area, mixed-use walkway with a giant plaza. The image in the middle is Woodinville, this is a real-life picture. This is like a wine shop area in the Woodinville area, that's part of a master plan. It's something that we've heard a lot when we're doing our research, people are like, oh yeah, Woodinville, we like that. So, so that we can think about, and then the third image here, Port Orchard, is another project that our consultant worked on. It's just an aerial image, this is just kind of example of part of what the final product is gonna look like when we're gonna have some nice renderings, we'll have a nice map, but we'll also have some other bits in there, next slide. The other bits, the boring stuff, that is probably of little interest to anyone except for the planning commission, my apologies, is, we'll have to translate these visions and these grand ideas and visions into into zoning, and with their zoning regulations, I'm not sure how, who here is familiar with, when I say zoning, who knows what zoning actually is? Anyone kind of, kind of familiar, maybe not familiar in the back? If you ever played SimCity or City Skyline, zoning is, you know, the colors that you choose to make buildings go. So what you do, so the zoning, if you're here, is the rules and regulations that we set forth of what you can do with your land use. So the master plan's going to set those rules and regulations. What it's also gonna do is, it's gonna say, look, you gotta put your pipes here, and we gotta get our appropriate infrastructure in place. We also is gonna do the tough job of balancing our housing needs, our jobs, parks and open space. That's not always an easy thing. A lot of times, development is like a balance beam, or it's like a teeter totter, right? On one side, you have profitability for the developer, right? We're a capitalist society, so that means that it's up to the developer to make money as they build stuff. But we also have our community needs, and sometimes your community needs can make it hard to make projects pencil and vice versa, sometimes what makes pencils project is absolutely awful for the community. So it's always a balancing act in trying to make sure that you can get the right policies in place. Also, what's important for this master plan is to protect the North Creek and natural areas. And then we also want to create a, just a clear unified community vision, next slide. There is some misinfo out there about what this master plan will do, I'd like to try to answer the questions, what we'll not do. The master plan, like the city isn't responsible for setting leases for, for businesses, right? I wanted to feature the picture of the QFC. We have nothing to do with what the QFC does, or what Kroger does with, Kroger Brands does with their locations. We can't set rent or anything like that, so the, the master plan does not evict businesses or set leases. This is just a land use decision on what we can and can't do. It won't lead to eminent domaining of private property or anything like that, that is not on anyone's agenda. And like I said, we, we also, the government generally has, does not have the ability to dictate what, how a business, private business operates. And so we can't really say, hey, this has to be a for-sale home, or this has to be a for-rent home. So we can't really dictate home tenorship. We can encourage stuff, we can offer carrots, but our ability to use the stick is limited. We also can't really reduce density or downzone. Like I said before, the state mandated this growth, the state mandated that we add homes and add people, right? And if we, if this master plan led to a reducing of downzoning, this all has to be approved by Department of Commerce anyways, there could be very bad consequences if we tried to downzone. So basically, we have to embrace what's already been planned for. So what this master plan won't do is eliminate opportunity for homes. And then also, just, it's not really a won't do, but it's just a quick caveat. Master plans usually take years, sometimes decades to develop, right? Just because we adopt this next year doesn't mean that your favorite business is immediately gonna go away. Or it doesn't mean that everything, there's gonna be a park built overnight, and all our problems are gonna be solved. It takes a lot of time, and because a lot of this master plan redevelopment effort is dependent on private property ownership, it's all ultimately kind of on their timeline, right? We can, the, the government can purchase properties, but at the end of the day, it's up to the folks at Safeway to determine when they want to have a giant surface parking lot, or if they want something else there. So what else is to say is that redevelopment takes years. This is a process where it might only take a year and a half or a year to adopt this master plan, but for everything to be transformed in the way it is, can take quite a bit of time. The Town Center is a good example of this. The Town Center took a big chunk of time for it to actually materialize into what it was. So just quick caveat, don't, you know, just expectations management. So, next slide, timeline. For this project, we are in the midst of phase two. Phase one was kind of this analysis and visioning, this was mostly done with just some initial community outreach with the, I think you might have saw us with a pop-up tent at the Mill Creek Festival. Then it was mostly just our, our data nerds, just crunching numbers and gathering data, trying to do their baseline stuff. Phase two is where we're actually diving into design concepts and ideas and vision. This is where we're really trying to dream and really trying to think about things. And this is where I think this meeting is most critical. Because this is where, as we're formulating ideas, well, wouldn't it be cool if? It's really important that the people that were paying a bunch of money to be smart on this stuff, that we're being able to tell them like, look, if you're trying to solve problems, these are the problems that our community has identified that you have to solve. So that's, again, reiterate why y'all are here. This is the time to provide that input into our consultants, so that, so that your concerns can be baked into all of our development scenarios and all of our design concepts moving forward. And then after this, once we've selected an idea, we will go into the environmental impact statement and the EIS process. And for non-development people in the room, that is a very long drawn-out process, and it can take a while, and then we'll actually have to go into the adoption process next year. So there's still a ton of work left on this, but it's exciting. Yeah, maybe it's only exciting for people who are bureaucrats like me, but it is very exciting, I assure you, because the end result of this is going to be a really cool walkable space. Next slide. Alright, so consensus workshop. I don't want to do a show of hands, because I don't want to call anyone out, but who, has anyone Googled what a consensus workshop is? Sorry if you haven't, next slide. So this is, so today's objective is to identify the three most important issues that the, that our consultants and the city council has to consider for this master plan. The objectives are to build consensus amongst us as a group and provide clear direction to staff and to consultants, next slide. The process is this. We're all gonna, it's gonna be just like, I'm gonna bring back bad memories of like dodgeball. We're all gonna go into groups, we're gonna pick a number, you know, 1, 2, 3, 4, 1, 2, 3, 4, right? We're gonna break it up, so that we'll have two or three different discussion groups. And each discussion group will be comprised of arts people, parks people, young people, planning advisory people, and that, and pretty much we'll have discussion groups that has a composition of every type of advisory board. Then in each of those discussion groups, we'll have small group discussions, and you guys are gonna be asked to generate, what are your top five concerns as a group that this plan needs to address? Then you'll talk about it, you'll talk about it, we have staff on hand that will sit with you groups to help you guide those conversations and talk about stuff, and hopefully not be terrible to each other. And then, after it all is done, you'll elect someone, some poor soul to stand up, and they will present to the rest of the group, this was our group's top five ideas and top five problems. Then we'll write it down. Then what we're gonna do is, we're gonna, after we get everyone, all the group's top, top five priorities, we're gonna put them all on the board, we're gonna look at them, we're just gonna look at them. And then we're gonna start clustering together, it's like, oh, this person said something about a lazy river. This person said something about kayaking, so this person said something about a dolphin, I don't know how that's gonna work, but you know what, maritime, let's call this the maritime bucket. And then we'll start grouping all these buckets together, right? Then, after we've named all and grouped and clustered all everything all together, what we're gonna do is, we have a little ballot for everyone. Name is optional, I guess. But, you know, I would say, if you, if you say it, own it. You're gonna look at our list of clusters. That's, and then you're gonna write down, of those named clusters, what's your number one thing of all those clusters that you want us to solve? What's your number two? What's your number three? And on down the list. Then what we're gonna do after that, after we've ranked all of our priorities, all that stuff, you're gonna give them to Justin, and through the magic of technology and his brain, we're gonna compile everything, we'll get the average, and then we'll have, as a group, determined our consensus number one, our consensus priorities to be addressed in the master plan. And then what's gonna happen with that is, I'm gonna take this information, we're gonna put it into a report, we're gonna give it to our consultant, and then it'll also be part of our reports back to city council so that they know that whenever we are addressing the master plan, or we are talking about key issues, we can touch back on these points that y'all talked about, just so everyone, it's keeping us honest too, that we're responding to those key points. So, let's do this, next slide. Let's do some ground rules first, though, alright? Alright, so as we get into our small groups discussions, I know we're all nice people, but sometimes it's nice to remember. Every perspective matters, right? You can't be like, hey, you know, I don't want any, I don't want any Washington State fans here, you know, this is only a Washington, nothing. All perspectives matter here. We want to focus on the issues, not on solutions, right? But we're not gonna get tied up like, well, I just really want a winery, that's the only thing I want, so I'm gonna talk about, like, okay, well, we're not talking about a specific solution, we're talking about what is the problem that we want to solve. You don't have enough retail of what you want, you don't want more shopping, that's great. But again, don't get too bogged down on the solutions, don't get too bogged down, you know, it's like buying a house, right? Like, you don't want to say no to a house because you can't disagree on what kind of curtains to buy, right? Like, you want to focus on more salient issues and just focus on the issues and solutions. Want to listen actively, respect differences, keep comments short, I gotta say that to myself all the time. You gotta share the space, right? You don't want to have one person dominating all conversation. And then finally, we're aiming for consensus here and not uni, not unanimity, unanimity? I always forgot to say that one. A wise person once said that the mark of a good compromise is an answer where no one's happy. So just keep in mind that we're looking for consensus and not necessarily, everyone has to agree on everything. That being said, I think, things to think about here, you know, how important is walkability? Questions you can ask yourselves, are there enough places for people to hang out? Are we protecting our trail system? That's a, that's a great question to think about in all this. How are we addressing parking and traffic, that's a valid question. And then, what kind of retail activity do we want? These are more just ideas, these are just kind of examples of questions you can, you can ask yourselves, next slide. That's the slide I was looking for, okay, so now, let's do the fun bit. So here's my planning commission.
Yeah, one thing, we sort of talked about the residential aspect of this, but in this area, there have to be a certain amount of jobs also. It's not going to all be residential.
Correct. Correct, so this is zone to be mixed use. So that means, we imagine this, at least when it was rezoned to comprehensive plan, to be a mixed-use corridor, a mixed-use area, so there was commercial activity, lots of commercial activity stuff happening here. So we want to keep in mind that this is an area that's supposed to be a place where you can live, work, play, roll, everything you want to do, you can kind of do in this area. One thing I like to tell city manager, you have a mode over here, is we have to think about, we're designing the neighborhood, right? It's, it's a useful concept to think about, in terms of a neighborhood has to have all these things in it. And so if you think holistically, you're gonna have a better design outcome. That being said, alright, so where are my planning commission folks? They're in the dais, alright, where are my DRB folks? Okay, and my arts? Do you have any arts? No go on the arts, okay. Parks, we're my parks people, and then we have our young advisory, I, I don't want to assume, but, are you guys, are you all the youth advisory? Okay, great. So I think we probably have enough to break into two groups, maybe, I think that's probably fair. So, so design review board, there's three of y'all, right? So if the design review board can go over to this corner for, or just can grab it towards that corner, one of the youth advisory people, you can go to this side of the room. And then, half of the planning commission can go to that side as well, I guess. And then parks, half you can go over there, half you can go over here. And I think we should be more or less evenly split between our discussion groups, right?
You have your table set? Well, let's, let's see, alright, so for this corner over here, can we sit over here? Yeah, okay, I think it's how the map tracks, yeah.
Alright, so. I think at every table, there should be a name tag and a little thing that you can introduce yourself. Let's take the time, Sybil and Justin, do you guys want to sit at either table and help facilitate? Caitlin, we thought we needed you, but if you want to go enjoy an evening on Netflix, you're, you're free to go. MVP right there, thank you. Alright, that's right, we're not quite balanced. Alright, who from over here wants to go to that group? One, two, three, five and six? They wears two hats, that's just true. I think it's probably okay. Alright, so let's take the time, introduce ourselves, let's, let's drink in, just who we are, right? And, and then we'll start talking about issues. 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 Okay, I just set a timer for twenty minutes, y'all, to start conversating and we're talking about top five issues as a group. Thank you. Okay, I just set a timer for twenty minutes, y'all, to start conversating and we're talking about top five issues as a group. Thank you.
You have.
They have.
Uh, that's okay.
So. The list of what we wanted, even though it's more like. Just on the best. So we actually.
So.
I have heard this. So I.
I want to say something. We want to make it.
So. I'm. I'm. I'll read. Is there? No.
There we go. These are fun.
I just. Be up. So the water part, I guess. How was the good part kind of? Was it very, very, very like?
Well.
It's. A question. Launch that cruise down.
Also. But next time you do report.
Oh.
But. That's. I. I would. So. Right. It's. I don't. Yeah, it's.
Actually, it was. Those two.
And they got one. Yeah. Yeah. Because.
That loss. In fact, um. A lot of it, you know, restaurants, all the bits we.
Cool.
Your natural place to market. Which is. So. Very popular.
I think it was first.
First. Well, and and we. But also we. Have. I would. I need it. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's. Then that's.
Um. So. Part of it. No, but the whole. This is. It's not. Or. That was. I mean, it was one of the supplies. So. Uh. I did a slide. I already. But in a. I. Okay. Yeah.
Absolutely. Okay, actually, that's been. The. It's. It's. Okay. Yeah. It's not. They talk.
Especially. It's like a pool just. And. They're probably.
I don't actually see that.
Especially.
Right.
Set in a new. Then. What's probably. I don't know. That's like. But. Um, it's not too. Yeah, it's not too. Don't be afraid. They're Chinese. They're. But now. Do you have a visit faster than. So. Maybe. So it also. Yeah. Can wait.
Yes.
Well, there are. So.
Thank you.
I suspect. Oh. For people.
Uh. Last. Yeah. What if. Um. How do they? Uh, if I am. But. They were telling me how. They're doing so. Actually, if I. Which was. Yeah. They. So having. I'm not sure. The pressure. Yeah. It's how it's just. Like. So they can't really solve it. But. So. Try. But. I mean. He's. I will. And. You got it. Another way to. For. But. Yeah. Right. But that. The. He heard about. I'm. That's. Yes. I think. So. I was. That was.
So. Really different. It's. Uh. That's one. For that. Perhaps. Like. He got it. Yes. All right. So it's. For. Trip. But. It's.
It's. It's. It's. Very. Um. So. Still. Self.
Yeah. So. Um.
Maintain this.
Well, it's entirely.
Um.
Okay. I'll. Okay. Work. So that. We have. I. For. Of. I think it's not. Is that? That might be easy. Swing it. Why do they have? Yeah. Or. Uh. They check. He's. Well. For. That's. If I. You can sell. I don't. Whether it's pretty. Terrible. I will. Off.
I.
Yeah. I thought.
We just.
So. That's one of those things.
Or. They consume out. These.
Right. For. Um. So. How many? Other than. In. Are the. Two. I say. They're. And they. All right. But. Yeah. Um. Um. Yeah. People are. Yeah.
Yes.
He's.
Right. They can ask. Or the track. We can meet. But it's. Sometimes. They. Sure. To even. Stress. Uh.
I don't know. So. I will. Yeah.
Well. Well. They were.
I would. For.
Well. Um. I mean, that.
I'm. For. So. Yeah. I have. The. Some. Very. Like. So. Yeah. So.
Yeah.
Probably. And. I keep. They're the one that. They're. So. I do. Summer. Yeah. So. It. That those are. It was like. Yeah. Pretty cool with the. Later. Our line. Always. Um. It makes a. Great. And. They. Isn't. So. Very. But. They don't. For. But. That. That's. Yeah. Um. So. I. I guess.
That's.
Already. Ready. For. Five.
Oh. Yeah. That's. That's. Yeah. That.
Yeah. So. There.
That's.
Yeah.
I think.
Yeah. You. Come. So. Yeah. We're doing things. You guys like. So. Don't. Feel. So. My.
I'm. I'm. Yeah. Oh. Just.
That's. Sure. That's all. That's all. I get. Right. All. That's. So you like. Prejudice. It's. Early. But. That. Kind of.
That's.
Over.
Everywhere. I'm like. Also. They're like. So. I mean. So have. The. You. That's. I started.
We're. But. We also. Right. Obviously. Sometimes. So if there's. An. Stay. On. Or. It's. More. So. We have. Kind of. So. You didn't have. Yeah. How did. You have. Part. Of. You did. Was. That's. Part. Of. You did. Next. If. I will. Also. I would. Do. Other. Something. They wish. To. Stop. Because. But. Yeah. I was. If I was. That's. Like. It looks. Like. It's. Well. And it's. Basic. Over. Over. He was. Also. About. Often. Businesses. It actually. Issue.
Like. Sorry. They start. Specifically. They. Did. The. That's. I just. I. Or. They. Or. Very. Comfortable. Um. I think. That's. Very. As. Conference. If. We. Can. So. We're. See. That. I mean. So. Shop. Pretty. Good.
Well. I. Want. You.
Was.
And. This. I would. Curve. He. Round. I would like. Access. So. I. My. I was. So. That. I guess. They would say. Five stories. This is. Uh. I don't. Want. To. There. Five stories. Are. Really. Really.
I guess.
And.
So.
Problem. So. I know there's a number of places. Which I. You don't. Listen. Um. Building.
So. Yeah.
Oh, never. The street. Street. As in. Most. Where like. There is. Before. Were required by. As a law. Um. Which we already do a lot. With. So. But. It's. Supposed. So. So. If you think. It's. Challenge. You. Story. So. There's. That's. And we. Was. Could be. Was. Prime. Or. Point. Less. Less dense. Or. More dense. While we're around. Less. And. The. Forest. Yeah. Different. It's. Sort of. So that's. I just want. Actually. Right. So. It's. Five. Yeah, that's what it is. Thirty. The stories. Are your best. Stories.
Oh. So. Well. When. It's. Trail. So. In fact. It'd be. That's. Someone. Was. Listening. To.
It. It.
When it comes to. Trade. Need. Of. Cones. To. Have. If friendly. Um. Accommodation. Would. Number. Is. Not to accommodate. But. I said. Of. That. She. Kids. Someone. It's friendly. Or. We. When it comes to. Agrees. Um. Agree. You know. One. We want. Accessibility. But. True. Without. Open. Commitment. It's. Real. Well. That's. Well. And then. We. We also know. More.
So.
But. When it comes to retail shops.
Alright. So. We're. Twenty minutes.
Little. For.
I'll. Let you. Finish. Thoughts.
About. Accommodation. I would think that's also. Some. Uh. Sh- shops. That are not. This. Right. In today's. Under. Very. Enterprise. So we also talk about. That. Really looking at. Yeah. That. That. Yeah. Where I. I would. Have to connect. They are. The whole.
Southern.
The South area. Uh. I'm. Let me. Just. Say. So. Um. That. I will. I. Which is. But the problem that. I'm. That's. They're. So. Any. If. They're not. I don't. So. Some. Like.
Alright. Some of this. Good conversation. Five minutes.
Having.
Four. Or.
So. So.
Right.
That'd be. If. I expect. That's. Not. Right. So. Yeah. This. Then. Whatever. It's. The. Or. Track. To. That's. Like. Or like.
Maybe. Go. Yeah. Yeah.
Yes. Maybe. Track. But. It's less. Cars. More. And. Space. And then how to bring people. Yeah.
Yeah.
Both. Both.
Both into. And. For them. To be able to. Prefer. People. Probably. Later. They might. Come here. Like. Yeah. Those. I look at. Fight. Concerns. And it's kind of like. Ten. As well. And. How we. Answer. That. That's. What. Concerns. Operate. For. This.
I guess one, one reason why it's. It's that I don't. That's. A little bit of way. Those are create that. Community appreciation. Yes. It's perfect for all.
Okay, so um I'm, I'm loathe to interrupt a good conversation. However, we got things to do. Do you wanna um see, am I, am I driving a sir? Or, or if you wanna do it too. Okay, you're the script, that's fine. Alright, good stuff. Um hopefully, we were able to have some interesting conversations and talk about stuff and um solve all the problems. So, who from? Share on Zoom, yes. Where is the share button? I swear I used a computer before. Alright, so um who, who would like to volunteer to share their group's top five issues to address? Tess? You have six. Overachievers, I love it. Alright. Entire space. Head, bike, safe. Okay.
Uh green space.
Love it. Re- regional access, is that something you sort of give phrasing for that or?
No, so, yes, but it had a little bit more to do with the it go free and vibrant access into the area as well as of course the people who live there to be able to leave.
Sure.
Right, like they're not in a zoo.
That makes sense.
As an, as an issue that we recognize that is friendly.
Yeah. Yeah, makes sense.
And then um community spaces. Not just, but not limited to the uh.
Okay, thank you so much. And group two, who would like to speak?
Be neighborhood by making it more pedestrian friendly accessible.
Pedestrian connections, love it.
Uh you can improve race pace and trail.
Okay.
Uh but more pedestrian and more mixed use slash.
Okay.
Uh then I would reduce comments of parking and.
Okay. Great, so. We have. So we have a bunch of different ideas, right? And they're all good, never, what they say, never bring an umbrella to a brainstorm. And um so now we kind of have to group these things together, right? Like how can we, how can we conceptualize all these different ideas that we talked about? Which jumps out at me first is we have the green space stuff, right? I think there's a lot of interest with green space and light, trail visibility, um moot improved integrated green space, so that seems to me like a natural cluster. The other one that popped out to me is both of y'all said public spaces and gathering spaces, and that's something that's really important to us. We also have some stuff about pedestrian connections, pedestrian bike safety and stuff like that, right?
Could I ask a question? I think there might have been a slightly different language you said it, but I do want to understand. When you said pedestrian, they wrote their pedestrian connections. Is that about like the ability to walk from areas outside of that dotted line into this space?
We'll talk about it, right?
Okay. I, we said pedestrian. Uh for.
Within the space?
I was wondering if.
Can we talk about them without the.
Yeah.
The barriers around it.
Being able to walk to it. Okay. Okay, I want to make sure I understood. That's interesting, different.
Yeah, I love it. But we kind of have a pedestrian and bike friendly kind of grouping, I think that makes sense.
I think the easier access to know. How about how does this function? How do we have access?
Exactly. And then retail that appears that appeals to more demographics, diversity of businesses to activate street. I think we just have one little hangnail. And that's the reduced prominence of parking and moving into the perif- could be integrated, but I think, you know. Yeah. I love it. Alright, so that means we have four little neat, we have four neat little buckets that we get to name. Um let's start with the, let's start with the Godzilla, let's start with the big one. What do you guys want to call this priority? Is that, I think that accurately captures kind of that this is like kind of.
Yeah, I'd agree with more pedestrian.
It's pedestrian.
Flow, that's a nice one, pedestrian flow. I like your flow, okay. So we got pedestrian flow. Um maybe this, this one's maybe this is low hanging fruit, community spaces, public gathering spaces, uh what do you guys want to call this? Community space, I think. There it is.
Maybe make it a little bit longer, say um. There's another way essentially to do it. When we were talking about festivals, it's kind of a way, needed engagement space. Both in the way of a place that's always there, then that's where things will happen.
So one buzzword I hear a lot is community activation space. A good word, if you guys are, if you're, if you're okay with the buzzwords, we can. Alright, so more green space and light and improved integrated green space, what do we want to call this one? Nature flow. Nature flow glow, I like it. Well, if we're going pedestrian flow and nature flow, obviously we should call this community flow, right? And then the um the last one is about business attraction and about retail and diversity of retail and creating a better retail environment, what do we want to call this one? Mom and pop shops. You guys want to do that? Yeah.
That's, that's the common thing whatever.
Are you though, the light? Aren't necessarily, well, shops, but it's just that, it's just diversity.
Ah, there it is, right there, diversity of retail. I didn't wanna, I didn't want to lead it, but I think that's a good one. Okay. Let me get this all organized then. I like to say I don't have OCD, I have CDO. Which is OCD alphabetized. I'll have Justin clean this up later. Okay, so now. Everyone gets a little ballot. Right? I wrote ten. Maybe other than dishes. Yeah, I mean, we have remarkable synergy here. And luckily with a list of four, you know, you have to mess with it if something gets cut out, it just seems like, hey, you know. You need people all for this, but you had to pick one. Alright, so at this time, go ahead and write down your board that you represent and um write down your name if you choose, um and then of pedestrian flow, communicate, community activation space, nature flow and diversity of retail. What's your, what are, what do you rank, one through four? One being, this is the most important thing to me, four being, um I don't say it's not important, but yes, you gotta, you gotta de-prioritize something. Um so, one through four. Did you have an Excel sheet made? Justin thinks of it all. Oh, I, I lost you guys' things. Okay, as everyone is done, then passing the beat and I'll hand it on to um my voting. Yeah. Hopefully there are no people in chats. No pressure, it's a lesson. Thank you. And then while the votes are being tabulated, um I can kind of go over the next steps for y'all. On September third, we're going to do two community outreach events. The first is going to be a, uh I used to call them brown bag event, but we're doing a virtual town hall over the lunch break. Um so for folks who have families or um just have better things to do at six o'clock, um they can attend a Zoom meeting and we're doing a town hall where we're just gonna be presenting the master plan process, presenting some key concepts that are being explored and answering questions and hopefully dispelling some um common misconceptions about it. And then if you don't want to do a virtual town hall, and then also that's gonna be recorded and put onto a YouTube's and put on the internets and all that stuff. Um but if you don't want to do the internet thing and you just want to be in person and yell at me in person, um at six o'clock on the third that day, we'll also be doing an in-person meeting, going over the exact same material, answering questions and things like that. And then October seventh, we will be doing the EIS scoping meeting with city council. So, the intent here is by the time we present some scenarios, some choices for uh city council this side, we have discussed and brainstormed concerns and issues with our volunteer boards. We have talked about it with the, we've introduced the concept of the, of the project at a festival and we've also held um both virtual and in-person community events with the community to be able to answer questions and do outreach. Also during this time, um our consultant is reaching out to um HOAs, the uh business organizations and businesses and doing some outreach and just letting them know about what's going on too. Um so we've been um by air, land and sea, we're hoping to have communicated as much as we possibly can for this project as possible, um that's kind of what's going on. Um yes. And EIS is environmental impact statement. Great question. That EIS statement, basically whenever there's a big project or big initiative, it's a deliberative process that's mandated by the government that we provide the public sufficient time to comment and address and raise any concerns about potential development. And part of the EIS process requires just certain steps that have to happen at certain times, there's like a scoping where, you know, you have to have a meeting with the public that says, these are the things we're thinking about and allow the public opportunity to be like, oh, I'd dust protest. Um and then once we select on a path, we'll have another meeting and then we'll go over the actual scenario we want to evaluate and then that'll create a comment period that'll go while the um that provide the public sufficient time to comment and address any environmental concerns. During that also process, our environmental consultants will be evaluating and studying potential impacts and then at the end, we will get a document hopefully that says it is going to be copacetic. That is the super quick high level explanation of what that is. Are we, or the, is the, the votes are in? Alright.
Alright, uh so I averaged the scores for all things and with a clear winner, pedestrian flow came on a score of one point five.
Wow.
Being better. I mean a tie between media patient space and university retail at two point six, and then neutral flow at three point one.
Interesting, that's great, this is great, this is terrific information. Do you want to talk about it as a group, well, kind of what our results are in that? Do you want to give that to me real quick, then I will, maybe we can have a quick discussion about this and then I will let everyone leave. So one was. Okay. Nature flow. Alright, that's great, um what are your thoughts? Do we think that this kind of, we, are we happy with this outcome, are we, do we hate this outcome, do we think that, you know, this is something that? Yes. Well, you can, you can keep all four. It just tied, it's tied between community activation space because they had the same score. Yeah, so two, two, four. There it go. There you go, that's more accurate. Um I personally am actually very interested that um the nature area, um a lot of what we heard from the outreach was like, I learned I touched that trail, but it sounds like everyone, you know, from the advisory boards was like the, the importance of pedestrian flow and pedestrian environment, pedestrian safety is something that really rose to top as a really critical element of this. And then I also thought it was interesting that um the community activation space is so prominent and I think that's interesting to me because I see it all the time, right? There's such a need for community spaces. I tell this to city manager Yama all the time. One of the things that first struck me when I moved to Milk Creek was the Christmas parade and it was atrocious weather, it was awful weather, it dumped rain on us. But it was, it was beautiful though because you had literally the entire town came out for this parade. We entered at the tree, we lit the tree, we all got soaked and hailed on. But it was, everyone was together on it, it was such a nice community event and it was like, it's so hard to find those community spaces here, so you know, it's think it's something smart. Yeah. Yeah. There's so much synergy. Yeah.
I appreciate, I think it's something third involved in, in how we looked at the. Just today, there are streets down, there are streets down the streets. Clearly see to the trail from there, and that's something that I would like to keep is the visibility. But I don't see how we could have the same kind of pedestrian friendly business access and also green space. Unless we're talking about pop dog stands out in the woods, you know, like.
We'll figure it out, there's, there's.
Yeah, I guess they're gonna try to come up with solutions, but I mean.
Yeah. Right, and one thing I also like to think about too is that um I'm a firm believer that um you should always listen to people who are smarter than you. And I also firmly believe that if you hire someone, you should only hire someone who's smart. And we selected an excellent consultant um who knows in their business well and that works in this space all the time. And um that's one of the things that I think it's important for them to figure out, you know, I don't think none of us have to figure that out right now, that's what we're paying them to figure out. And um I think that's something also that as they bring forward their ideas and we discuss this, we can kind of hold them to like, hey, you know, being able to figure out how we can integrate commercial and nature and bridge the gap, that's a really important thing to our community, we think it'd be really cool if we figured it out. And that's something we can keep bringing up and keep discussing, so it's great information, this is great input that we can provide to council. That being said, seven twenty-three, um I think we can all get back home for dinner. Um so, is there any other questions or any closing thoughts or anything like that, or?
I have one more thought and I. That you shouldn't have for restaurants to use a restaurant friendly, it's all a big, huge friendly pedestrian friendly area. Provide that to people who are not using.
Yeah. It's great, great thoughts.
That is something that I would like to see. Same way we park, I think we should have.
Some restrooms. Any, any restrooms at this point. Somebody give Starbucks a break is what we're saying. Those poor workers. Yeah. Okay. Um so I think with thought, um I think these are great closing thoughts. Again, I want to thank everyone for coming and attending, um this input is super critical. Um and I will continue to reach out to our individual boards. Um probably after we go through the EIS scope, look forward to another invitation. At that point, we're gonna have some more specific design scenarios developed by our consultant. At that point, this group will meet, come together again but act more of like a focus group um to kind of troubleshoot specific questions or thoughts about the different scenarios and then we're gonna come back and then of course planning commission, sorry, you're gonna deal with me a lot on this, um but thank you once again, I think because there was a meeting started, there's like some kind of Robert's rules process to close this. Yeah. Correct. Correct.
I didn't even know it was there.